Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the April 13th, 2022, meeting of the Village of Maranic Planning Board. Before we get started, I'm going to take attendance for the record. We have the planning board members all with us. There's Richard Littman, Ellen Styler, Cindy Goldstein, Seamus O'Rourke, and myself. And along with the planning board, we have Frank, who's our building inspector, Teresa. I do this every time. I know it's back. Baker. Teresa Baker, our land use attorney, Ashley Lay, and Alicia Moore from AKRF, our consulting planners. John Keller from Keller. I just call you John Keller. Keller Sessions, right KS, my initials. Keller Sessions, our consulting engineer, Susan Oakley from Terra Bella Land Design, our consulting landscape architect, and Brittany O'Neil, who is our land use board secretary. Okay. Did that. We have minutes to approve, and then we have two items on the agenda, one application, and we're going to hopefully conclude our discussion on the proposed wetlands law amendments. So we have before us minutes from Wednesday, March 23rd. And I do have some changes to make. But before I get into that, does anybody have any comments or any? Any errors, any changes, anything?
I had, I had one suggestion. From my notes, I thought that there was a discussion where I think Ms. Juliana did concede that they were attempting to get as close to a target of 78 trees, which is from, I believe, the landscape memo. The current minutes seem to refer to 73, which was part of the discussion. I just think it progressed further from there.
Right, right, right. Well, that's where my changes are. Right before the move, on page three, right before the motions to schedule the public hearing. Oh, it's right here. I knew I read that somewhere recently. Ms. Oakley's discussion, I felt, was lacking. So I wrote an introductory paragraph because there's no context for those three bullets there, and there's no numbers for those three bullets there. So my introductory paragraph says, in June 2021, "A number of mature trees were removed from the property without the benefit of the village code requirement of a site plan review and approval." "Since it was determined that the applicant is required to replace the removed trees, Susan Oakley of Terra Bella Land Design, the consultant to the planning board, had to determine the number and size of the root trees and the number and size of the replacement trees." And then we can go into the first bullet where Susan said how she determined the number of trees. And there should be a conclusion after that sentence, which says, "I determined that there were 66 trees removed." And then the next bullet, I use the US Forest Research to determine, determine the growth of trees, growth of the trees from 2003 to 2021. And then the third bullet was, "I use the village tree law to determine the number of trees to be replaced, which totals 78." And then if we wanted to add a bullet after that, we can say that Ms. Giuliani, Ms. Juliana, the applicant's representative, agreed to come as close to 78 trees as they could. Is that? That good? Anybody want to make any changes to that? I think that's more complete, and it gives a sense of one of the largest issues with regards to this application and puts it in the minutes. You don't have to go watch the tape. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Then can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, Ellen?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Brittany, I have this kind of typed out and marked. I'll get it to you tomorrow, or should I send it directly to Barbara?
We can send it to Barbara, both of us.
Yeah, okay. I'll get it, I'll get it out to you in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
B and B, Brittany and Barbara. Okay, okay, thank you. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is a site plan review for 1037 Oaks Lane. The applicant is proposing to install an in-ground pool, a stone patio, and some fencing. They've been to us before. We've gotten some revised plans from them, and then we got revised plans from them again after that. All to bring us to tonight's meeting where there's just one open issue, I believe, some minor things, but do we have members of the applicant's team? We can.
Promoting them.
We can promote them, is the right word.
Hey, Angie from Dan Sherman's office, how are you?
Good. Do you want to walk us through sort of what's changed between now and, and the last meeting where you were before us?
Yeah, absolutely. So the site plan hasn't really changed in terms of location of the pool or the patios or anything. We've just addressed some of the comments and concerns from our last meeting. And I think the couple of open items that we still have is, there was a comment regarding proposed lighting. And we're not proposing any new lighting on the property right now, just the interior lights, the two LED lights that are standard in a pool. But other than that, we're not proposing any landscape lighting or any lighting around patios or anything. So I know that the engineer had updated his site plan because Keller had some comments regarding the stormwater, and that has been submitted, and I think that Chris addressed all those comments, if I'm not mistaken. But yeah, and so then we just coordinated our filter location. We're putting it at the top left of the property. It's the northwest side. And the engineers coordinated with our site plan to match that location of the propane tank and the pool filter.
Okay. John, since they brought that up, maybe you would just like to comment on the changes that were made, and if there's anything still outstanding?
Yes, the, the application was resubmitted, and the engineer had addressed all our comments. I did have a few additional comments, which I included in my, my memo. One was the piping into the coal tech units. I'd like to see a bypass around the isolation units, which is the pretreatment units. It's, it's a minor revision that could, I'm sure, easily be handled on the plans by the engineer. And I'd like him to include the pretreatment calculations within the engineering report. And he also addressed the method of testing the soil for infiltration rating. He responded to me in a, in a, in a letter. I'd just like him to also include that in the engineering report. And I believe there was two minor, two documents that he submitted, one of contractors' certification statement and a maintenance agreement, which were submitted. It's just that he has to change the, the name of the village to the Village of Maranic on those statements. He had a different municipality.
Copy to from another application?
So that, so the very minor, the, the comments I had.
If it's okay, I wanted to, I wanted to ask about that pretreatment calculation. Is that, is that a calculation that has not even been performed yet? So we don't know what the result of it is, or it's been performed, and we just want to include it in the report to memorialize?
Yes, it's been performed, performed to size the pretreatment unit. He just, I'd just like it in the, in the report itself.
Okay, so no, so no, no unknowns there, nothing that could, yeah, okay, thanks.
I have a question. Maybe this is for Teresa. Let's say in a year or some period of time, the applicant decides they want to do exterior lighting around the pool. What's the process for that? Does that, is that a permitted action that the building inspector takes?
So sorry. I, it, the question would be really what type of site lighting they would be putting up. If they would be putting up something that was so extensive that it would require an amendment to the site plan, then they may have to come back to the planning board. But generally, it would be either exempt from regulation, or it would go to the, to Frank. And I, I know Frank's on here, so I'll let him speak for what he would do. But what I'm gonna do here, since she did mention the LED pool lights under the water, I'm gonna add that to the resolution if you guys decide to move forward tonight. I already put that language in there. But Angela, you're talking about lights under the surface of the water.
Correct, yeah, it's under the surface of the water. There's no proposed lighting in the landscape or lawn or on the patios.
Okay.
And I suppose enforcement of that, you know, if, if somebody decided to add that to the property later or in 10 years, it would, it would be the neighbors that would, you know, bring that to the attention of the building inspector. I would assume there's no process to come back and fill out paperwork just to add.
Yeah, there wouldn't be, no.
The language in the code is pretty broad. It just says lighting shall be installed in such a way that it will not create a nuisance or annoyance to adjoining property owners. So it could, I mean, generally, if you stick with residential scale lighting and you, and you point it downward and you don't use floodlights, it's generally avoids the nuisance.
Right, and nobody would ever know that it was new lighting or added because it's not bothering anybody.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't recall the, the other two issues, the minor revision to modify the connection to the pretreatment and the two minor due to the engineering report. Teresa, did we have that in the, in the resolution?
Yes, yes, that's the first condition.
Thank you, thank you. Now, this is what I get for doing this like a couple of days ago. Now I don't remember anything.
Yeah. The, the only other issue is the issue that Susan raised. I don't want to speak for Susan, but.
We're gonna get to that.
Okay.
Just want to, well, okay, we'll just go down the line. AKRF, and there's no issues. You're all good with everything, right? So we have the comment on the lighting, so everything else was satisfied. So that brings us to the issue, unless AKRF, unless you want to say something.
No, I think we, we covered the lighting already.
Okay, this brings us to the issue in the report from Susan Oakley of Terra Bella with regards to the trees and the construction entrance. I don't know, Angela, did you see all that paper, all the paperwork? You saw the reports?
I didn't get a new updated letter, if there was one. But we did add tree protection fencing around that tree near the construction entrance.
Yes, I, I think we noticed it, but I don't think that's the issue. Susan, you want to explain this? I want to speak for you.
There are two trees by the construction entrance. One is a six-inch diameter breast-type Japanese maple. The other is a 28-inch diameter breast-type trunk of a willow. And when, if you put proper tree protection fencing around the drip line of the willow, it basically takes up all the room that the construction entrance uses.
Right.
So.
Plus, there's issues with heavy equipment going over the roots and impact.
Right.
Right, and, and damaging the roots. So I don't know if there's any other way you could get into the property, looking at property. This seems to be the most logical way to get in there.
Yeah, this is really the only access because on the other side of the house, it gets very tight. It'd be existing vegetation that's there.
Right.
This would be our main access route.
Right.
Well, one suggestion is that if the, if the landscaping on the right side of the house is small, shrubbery, is that the case?
Yes, it's, it's shrubbery on the foundation of the house, and then it's taller evergreens on the property line.
Right, so the, the foundation plants could be transplanted, and then there would be no worry about damaging a mature tree root. So I'm not sure if the width is acceptable for spacing for construction vehicles, but it might be.
It looks like a window well there. I'm not sure what the, what distance is from the window well to the property line where the, it's a row of hemlocks.
It's tricky, I know. Um, Kathy, just to give people an overview, the reason that the tree protection standard puts the fencing straight down from the drip line is that ordinarily, tree roots mimic the crown of a tree. So if the fencing comes down from the drip line and nothing goes within that fencing, then the, pretty much the roots are, the important roots are, are protected.
Right.
Well, if you look at the site plan and also the photograph, Susan, that you provided with us, the, the driveway approaches the willow. So there's already the driveway there. I'm not, it's hard to see how, from the photograph, hard to see how the, the trucks would come in. It looks like they'd be more to the right of the willow. And again, the driveway is already there. I'm not, I don't know if that would help it or hurt it, you know?
Right, and I'm also wondering if it would be possible if we propose to transplant the maple during construction, and then we can access it more around, we don't have to be within the drip line of the 28-inch caliber willow.
Well, if you, if you look at the photograph, I know it may be difficult to see. If you look at the photograph, um, you can see some of the, the branches coming down of the willow, and you can see that that's pretty far over, pretty close to the house.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So imagine that that's where the fencing would be. There really isn't any room.
Right, okay. Yeah, I could definitely see if we have enough room on the other side of the house to access the property for sure. It is smaller shrubs around that window well, so they would be easily movable. I just have to make sure that we have enough width for the machinery to get back there for the pool company.
Right, understandable.
Well, and then there's the other option that's available is you could, and this is for the planning board, really, if you wanted to impose a condition that read, "If either the willow or maple trees die or injured as a result of the creation of the construction drive from the existing driveway, the landowner shall replace the trees with three 2- to 2.5-inch caliber native deciduous trees and shall maintain them and ensure that they thrive." So that's an option to relocating the construction, construction entrance.
It might be some time before the trees die.
Yeah, that, that was my concern.
Right, I mean, it could be a couple of years before that willow tree is dead.
Yeah, I, I, I was gonna ask about that number four. I, I don't like it, I think, for that reason, right? Which is, when, when would you know? I mean, the tree could decline. It's, it seems like a, it seems like maybe it's not practical.
And I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's, I'm sorry.
It's just, it's a, it's a common issue in the village is who polices that. You know, there are, there are already some properties where trees have possibly failed, or, I mean, let's assume that they failed, and they haven't been replaced, so.
Well, don't, don't willow trees have particularly shallow roots? So I would think a willow would be subject to, you know, more, it would be more sensitive than maybe, say, an oak or maple with a deeper root?
It's possible. It really depends on the water table in a particular area.
Well, a willow, it's gonna be wet there, right? It's gotta be wet.
Well, that's how they like it, right? And, and to lose that tree would, you know, that, that absorbs a lot of water in that area, that mature willow.
Susan, aren't there things to do to aerate the soil after you've had compaction from construction? I mean, there are remediation techniques to save trees after they've been insulted by heavy equipment driving across their roots, right?
I, I think the key here is to try and save trees. There's no guarantee.
Right.
What about some sort of planking that goes over that area? You know, like.
They're already suggesting that they're putting some plywood down.
Yeah, they're proposing plywood.
Right, well, yeah.
There's, there's, there's also heavy, there's also heavy rubber matting that, we, we put that down in lawn areas. But we typically use it with lightweight, lightweight equipment, you know, smaller equipment. My only concern would be the, the dump truck that would be taking the soil out from the excavation.
Right.
That's gonna be a bit heavier than we, than the equipment that we usually use when we use the heavy rubber matting.
Right. The widest track machine is about nine feet wide, so you would need at least 10 to 12 feet to be comfortable to get in and out of that site.
Right, exactly. Um, I mean, I could probably, I most likely have about, if I move the shrubbery based on the scale, just looking at the drawing, I could probably come up with 10, 10 feet. Even if I have to move some of the existing arbivites along the property line for, in terms of just for temporary for construction, I think we can access it on this right side.
John, does that mean you have to relook at the SWIP, or?
Not necessarily. No.
Well, the area of disturbance would change. It would flip to the other side.
Slightly, but I, I believe, I believe the square footage that they used took in that whole area along this side of the property.
Right, so.
Yeah, because we have the drainage chambers going in on that right side in the rear yard, so we've taken up a lot of that already. So it's mostly just that access drive portion of disturbance that will be flipping.
Right. Right.
So, so four should read, "The construction entrance will be shifted."
Well, well, we don't know for sure, so we want to do a resolution tonight. We can do it at the next meeting if Angela can look at it and, and resubmit a site plan. Because it just seems too.
Too up in the air?
Too up in the air, too iffy, I was gonna say.
Could that be like a conditional approval and have it be an internal review within building and engineering for this site access?
Well, if you're comfortable that there's enough room that you're willing, I mean, it's up to the board, really.
I, I'd kind of like to see a final site plan before I sign off on something with a construction entrance that's totally flipped.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with that.
Okay.
Need to.
All right. And, and I'm sure, yeah, okay, so Angela, you can look at that. We, you know, we can get you on the next agenda.
Okay, yeah, not a problem. I'll go through and make the measurements and then make sure that we can move on there as well.
I mean, you know, we, we would need a new site plan. We wouldn't need a new SWIP or anything like that, John. If the area of disturbance right now is shown as 5234 square feet. So as long as the area disturbance is, is basically the same.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought the, the question was if we, if we were just moving some vegetation along the present side that it's proposed on. If it's moved to the opposite side, then we should modify the SWIP to note that in the, in the, in the disturbance area. But the site plan is part of the SWIP, so if the site plan is modified, then the SWIP is being modified. If there's anything in the narrative that describes the access on the left side, and it's changed to the right, then that narrative should be corrected in the SWIP.
But it shouldn't change any of the stormwater design of any of the management of the stormwater, right?
It's just, no, no, because it's only for access purposes, and it's gonna be restored afterwards.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. Sounds like a better plan.
Okay, yeah.
I, I, the homeowner shouldn't want to lose that willow. It's irreplaceable. You can't just go out and buy willows. And it, as, you know, was pointed out, it takes up a lot of water, and it, they're beautiful trees. They're, you know, they're, they're getting rarer and rarer because you don't, people aren't planting them nowadays. Want to keep that tree and do anything that they can to, to keep it there.
Then we can remove that condition from the resolution, so that cleans things up a bit, too.
Yeah, okay.
And they can, they can pick up the ones from John as well, so we won't have that condition.
Yes.
It'll definitely be cleaner.
Yes. And, and Brittany, Angela doesn't have a copy of, of Susan's memo, if you could get that to her.
Yeah, it was sent out to Dan. Angela sent to Dan's email.
Okay, yeah, I looked today. I didn't see it, but I'll take it.
It was the last week. It came, it was a couple of days, the one we already received. Last, yeah, the seven.
And I, I think Frank should confirm the width of the entrance that it needs to be in order for it to work.
Yeah.
So would we allow them to make the next meeting, the 27th? Because then that cutoff already happened, so when would I, what's the latest we could get documents? Today was the cutoff for that.
Well, that would be up to John and Susan. There, there's such minor changes. If, if the construction entrance fits and moves over, you know, if it moves over to the other side, I don't think Susan has any, anything else that she'd want to add. It would just be John looking to make sure that the changes were made in the documents that he needs to see, which might, it would be a very quick review.
Yeah, as long as I get it by the middle of next week, that should be fine.
Just to remind everyone, there is a 28 diameter breast-type tree in the rear, right, of the yard? So that tree protection fencing needs to be at the drip line of that tree, so that should also be taken into consideration for whether this access will work.
Okay, definitely, yeah, I'll see it on the plan.
I'll just forward you the memo again, just in case.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. Anybody else have anything on Seven Oaks Lane? Are there still seven oaks on Seven Oaks Lane? We're gonna make sure that there are, if there aren't, no.
Seven oaks and one willow.
And one willow. I think there is a willow, willow something already in the village. I know there's one in March. Anyway, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good, have a good week.
Happy, want to do a motion to table?
Do we need a motion to table?
Well, since you're, you're gonna put it to the next meeting, if they, if they give you the documents in time, it's just clear for the minutes that we didn't take action, I guess.
All right, I'm up for the table of this application until the next meeting on April 27th.
Don't move.
All right, Cindy.
I'll second this, you, you move.
Seamus?
I, yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
And of course, I say yes. All right, great. Okay, that brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is our continued review of the proposed wetlands amendments. You all might have seen a couple of emails the other day. The trustees were scheduled to meet with the chairperson of HCZM on Monday night at their work session, and they hadn't heard from us, so I got a phone call or text or something from one of the trustees asking if we were done. I told them we weren't going to be done until tonight. They asked if we had anything in draft that they could see, the extent of what we were thinking of. Um, they asked if we had anything uh in draft that they could see, uh, the extent of what uh we were um thinking of. Uh, and uh, as this memo was posted on the village website for tonight's meeting, I saw no harm in um sharing it with everybody. And they, Thomas looked at this. I sent it to Thomas as well and the, but the board of trustees and they decided after they saw this to postpone their discussion for another two weeks. So that they could take these comments into consideration um while they discussed it. So that's what all that was on Monday, going back and forth. Um, so um, I had um. Only a couple of minor comments with regards to the structure of the salutation and uh making sure the planning board members were copied on the memo. In addition to the HCZM and everybody else. Other than that, I have uh no comments. So I'm gonna throw it open to the rest of the planning board. I know Cindy uh had to tell me what a perimeter permit was today. I know she has some comments, but um, go for it, guys. I want to go first.
So that was, that was really the only substance of my comment. I I thought actually, this, this was a great memo synthesizing what I think was a very overworked, overwrought. Complicated, unnecessary, redundant document, so I think that was, that was.
Wrong with it, yes.
Oh, it was terrific. Well, I, okay, so maybe I have two comments. One is on a broad level, are we. Looking to protect the wetlands and the buffer to the maximum extent practicable, to quote the HCZMC's language. Um, I I, you know, we got lost in the, in the language and what they were doing and picking it apart, but. I I just want to step back and make sure we make our comments based on the maximum protection that would be reasonable for us to demand in a coastal community. That floods, that has all sorts of environmental impacts, so that's one thing. The other thing is, the conversation that happened with HCZMC and the planning board way back in the past. Was not just about marine structures and transferring that permitting authority strictly to HCZMC. It was also for perimeter permits, so I would suggest that we. Talk about, you know, we we put the two of them in the same basket, because otherwise, we have a wetlands permit coming, application coming to planning. Where really all of the action is happening at HCZMC with consistency, so they should just go ahead and do the permitting. At the same time and and leave the planning board out of it for marine structures and um perimeter permits.
I have no problem with that whatsoever, now that I know what a perimeter permit is. And if anybody wants to know, Cindy can describe it wonderfully.
It, you almost don't need to know what it is. You just need to know that the process requires to go into an extra board just for a rubber stamp of what HCZMC does so well. It it just, let's, let's make life easier for a change.
I agree. I mean, right, I totally agree. You know, the marine structures, the docks and things like that, but lifts. And the perimeter permits belong to the um.
And and then, so the question is, are we, are we, are we doing the, is this the most robust protection we can come up with? And I don't know, Seamus, you you were on HCZMC when I guess some of this started. Would, you guys looked at that in terms of, you know, the number of feet of the buffer and?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, it's not in our red line, but I believe the thousand feet um was previously uh two hundred and fifty, maybe. So there was definitely a large expansion, um, or it was two thousand, I guess, right? Because it would, it gets smaller to be, to capture more. Um, so I think that this expands um the amount of. Wetland inventory that's gonna get caught by this, which is is a positive. Um, yeah, and I, you know, my, my read of it continues to be that. Yeah, I I think it it seems to, although I agree that there's a lot of words to get to it. Um, it seems to provide the right type of restrictions on doing things inside of what we've defined as a wetland or the adjacent area buffer. I think we're on with buffer now. So, ye- yes, I I mean, for for me, I I I think this works. Um. Uh, it, which is, it was a great comment, Cindy, right? Which is like, it has to go to some board, but let's make sure that when it comes there, it's 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 doing the right purpose. It's achieving the right purpose, right?
Rather than just, you know, uh, racking up consultants' fees for the applicant, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense.
Anybody else have any other comments on this? Um, I I think uh, we should make a great job on this. I mean, I, you know, as Cindy said. It it was complicated. There was a lot of material in there, um, and some of our comments were just like, oh, God, this doesn't make sense. You made sense out of it all, so, thank you. Um. So that, you know, if that's it, then we just add perit- perimeter permits um to the first bullet in general. Permits for restructures and perimeter permits and uh. If it's mentioned anywhere else in the, in the memo, then it would have to get changed there, too. But other than that, I think um this says, says everything that our concerns want.
Okay.
Anybody else? And this, this just.
Oh, it's good.
I don't think we need to vote on anything, do we, Theresa? Yeah, she always likes.
And I I just have a general question. Um, sorry, Theresa, go ahead and answer and then.
I was gonna say, you should, you should vote on it because you're making a recommendation, you know, as a board together.
So i- in the markup of the actual law itself, uh, we flagged where these changes would occur. And in some cases, we did strikeouts, but um we were waiting to make the full line edits until we heard back from the planning board on which direction you wanted to go. Do you think we should go ahead and make those line edits or wait until the village board reviews the law?
Um, uh, no, I think if you, if it's accompanying our memo.
Attach it, attach it as an appendix.
Yeah, attach it to this, but and mention, you know, that it's attached, you know, we we've indicated where these changes occur in the attached marked up copy of the law, something like that.
Okay.
A- actually, what, what was your question there? Was it that you would take the commented red line and turn it into just a full red line? Because I actually prefer the comments for somebody's initial review. We could provide both, if maybe that was the recommendation. But I I actually like the comments here, which provide just a little bit more color on changes that could be, you know, enacted, right?
Yeah, and and I, that, and that's why we presented it this way for the purpose of this meeting, so maybe we just do that. Maybe we just send it as is, see what the village board's response is, and then make the line edits following that.
Yeah, good, what what do others think? But, you know, like, I just pulled one up. I mean, commonly understood definition, consider deleting. I I prefer that color to just striking it and having someone wonder why, you know, we're getting rid of the state of New York, so.
I I agree. I think it'll mean a lot more to people with the actual comments there. I agree.
I don't have any problem with that. I mean, you know, any, anything that makes it easier for the next person to come along, you know, if they agree with our comments to find, you know, where the changes happen. Because this is, this is how errors get in the code all the time.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think just from being with this document a little bit at HCZM, I think it's partially how we've gotten to this place is just swapping. In some cases, messy red lines rather than, you know, comment based issues list, so anyway, enough said, but I I I do like it in this format.
Okay, okay, so do I have a uh motion to um. Recommend the um atta- the letter that we have before us as um, as amended tonight uh to the uh village board of trustees?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Nice vote, yes, with the attachment, of course, and reference to the attachment as we mentioned. Okay, um, good job, everybody. It's one of the most thorough reviews we've done of all. Very good. Um, do you have anything else for tonight? That's the end of our agenda. Not uh, pretty quick tonight. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
You two are like a team.
Abin Castello.
Could have been worse.
All right, all in favor, we'll do this as a voice vote. All in favor?
All right.
All right, everyone, have a good evening.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Best happy holidays.